And submit public comment. The meetings will be held on select boards meeting at the town office and also available remotely through a Zoom platform. Remote participation and or public comment during the meeting must be submitted through the Zoom platform, browser application, or by phone at 1-646-558-8656, the meeting ID number. But this particular one, the meeting ID number is 813-3881-6595, and the passcode is 167221. Be advised, data rates may apply. Attendees may indicate their desire to speak by raising their hand, which is star nine by phone. This should only happen at the appropriate time for public comment. When called on, you can unmute your connected device, start six by phone, and all attendees must state their name before commenting. We can probably skip the flight conditions, I don't have a spot. Holy moly. There's three of me up there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Can you hear us? That's the point.
Hello?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
You can.
Can you hear us? We can.
Yeah, I can now. All of a sudden, there was three of me on the screen there, frightening itself. We'll move on. Adoption of the agenda. We have some additions.
Additions to the agenda? Yeah.
We just have the letter. This is ridiculous. If he's connected to more than one link, that might be the problem. Delete one of them maybe, or... I don't know. Talk to Tom in the background there. We just have the letter from the recycling committee to add.
And the SBA.
And the what?
Man from SBA.
He's going to be under my report.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you. We just have to add the letter from the recycling committee.
We have, we have a couple of items. Can you hear me, Chairman Johnson? No.
I can't hear you, Krista.
There's a couple of items to add.
I think I'm muted on that Zoom screen. I'm on, my mic is on, but he can't hear me.
I can hear you, Krista.
Oh, you can?
Peter, can you check audio range, check if it's okay?
Say again?
Check your audio, make sure it's centered.
Speaker?
Speaker.
Supply magic?
Display. Yeah, yeah.
Ask him again. Hear you?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Echo.
Is your computer mic on?
It is right now.
That's better.
So Kevin, Chairman Johnson, can you hear me? Chairman Johnson?
Can I try talking to him? Peter, talk to them.
Can you hear me here? Can you hear me?
I can.
It's coming from only the laptop.
Christie, try again.
Testing, testing.
Can I talk to the computer? Testing.
Testing.
Testing. How are we doing?
Not well.
Can I talk to them on your, on your computer, Peter?
Testing. One, two, three, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's coming up good.
Yeah, I'm going back. Okay, go.
Chairman Johnson, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Chairman Johnson?
I can, Christie.
Okay.
Adoption of the agenda.
Okay, I would ask that you consider adding a letter regarding recycling. It comes to you from the manager of the recycling center. Also, a letter of intent for a grant application coming from the harbor master, Paul Plummer. And I would also ask that you move the townwide revaluation towards the end of the agenda after, say, after number 10, after lease rates with Pammy's Ice Cream Parlor, because we have people here in the room for some of these other items, so I'd like you to get to those first.
We'll move six down to 10.5. What was the other one?
We have a letter from the recycling center manager and a letter of intent for a grant application from the harbor master.
That's under eight already.
That's already in there?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. That one's already there. Eight, the, the letter of intent from the harbor master is already in number eight. I'm sorry, apologize for that. So you could put it under other business, this letter from the recycling manager?
The check's not there, is he?
No.
Okay, good. That should work then. All right. Public comment. Anybody there? Is there any public comment?
Yes.
Six.
Allison Hawks, Cundy's Harbor. I was hoping to speak at the workshop that came before this on the Mitchell Field Plan. I guess, I have a couple problems with the Mitchell Field Plan, and it'll, one of the things always coming back to, that I just don't feel like we incorporate the fishing community ever when we talk about stuff. It always feels like we're doing recreational building, and I'm not sure in the plans that I've seen, what you've just provided in that, in the 10-page thing that you've posted that I read. I'm also concerned about the cost that you guys are putting forward to build down there. I think that you're way off, honestly. When Spike said that he, we're in the sweet spot of building wharves, I had to laugh out loud, honestly, because I'm not sure what he means by that, but maybe a sweet spot for builders, but not for people that want to build a wharf. And speaking with one of the wharf builders here, you know, he's seen costs double, and we're, we're working from 2022 numbers. So I'm also very confused by the process that has happened here. Like, we have waterfrontage, we have this really beautiful spot at Mitchell Field, and we really have not done our due diligence. How would we not without, how are we without permits to move forward? And you guys are like, let's move forward, and you don't have all the proper permits in hand that you need. Wouldn't that be the first thing that you say? Is that, let's get the proper permits first, and then we'll go out to bid before you waste someone's time? Are you sure you're going to get those permits? It's taken you guys forever to get to this spot. And it's, it's, I'm a little disappointed at where we're at. I'm glad that we're here, but this far along, and there's all these things that you guys haven't done, you haven't done the other subsurface, whatever parts that you've needed to do. I'm like, I'm just disappointed that we're not taking better care of our waterfront, and we're not being better stewards of the coastline that we have.
Is there anybody else?
Yes, Kevin, there's a...
And someone in the room.
And someone in the room.
Do the hand first.
Let's, let's see if we can do the hand. I've lost the hand.
I, I'm muted.
Please.
Am I available for public comment?
Yes.
This is Gary Vincent, Harpswell. I have a question, reference the several questions that I've submitted to the board of selectmen and the leadership at Harpswell Community Television in and around cost and direction. Those requests and comments have gone unresponded to, so I'd like to, one, ask who should they be directed to, and when could someone accept the response? And then, second, I was participating via the Watch Harpswell TV Facebook page, and then was told that I was basically uninvited, would not be accepted as a friend, and could no longer comment. And that was based on my rude treatment of other commentators. So I've provided that complete list of activity and comments to the select board and the management at Harpswell TV. I've yet to receive a response in terms of what was considered to be harassing or trolling. So I'd like to see how I move forward to get an answer to that question. Thank you.
Thanks. No, we have a hand.
Where's the hand? Was there another speaker?
Jerry Lehman, Oars Island, Maine. Well, we've talked about the working waterfront here in town for quite a bit, and, I mean, we had open discussion, Dave, about working water fronts, and fisheries knowledge does not seem to be applied to a lot of these things. So I would like to put a proposal out for Fisheries Knowledge Trust Committee with a majority of working-class waterfront officials, fishermen from all varieties of fisheries, who not to be best involved when it comes to issues on our waterfront than those who actually rely on the water for a daily income for their families and multi-generational in this town. I think it would be a good first step for the selectmen in this town to move forward. I mean, by using their knowledge, I mean, you're getting generational knowledge on the water around the clock. I look at these committees, and it's not for the lack of people not wanting to participate. I mean, I appreciate everybody on the committees taking their time, and, and I understand that. Everybody has busy lives. But we're pushing forward with options and venues, I go, that make no sense to the working waterfront. I mean, I'm glad we put the working waterfront signs back up on our town, but that's not officially what's going to help the working waterfront. But an actual working waterfront committee with a Fisheries Knowledge Trust Committee is a good first step getting there. I mean, I'd be happy to, to pull together all the fisheries resources and knowledge together to help this further along, but I think this would be a good first step that the town can move. Thank you.
Can we make a motion? Can we make a motion? Can we make a motion?
I have a question.
Can I make a motion tonight?
If you make a motion...
It has to be a member of the board. I think there should be a mission statement.
A front committee to represent the entire fishing community. How is there a downside to that?
So what I'd like to do is maybe unfold it into the harbor and waterfront committee and give, give that mission statement to them, have them modify their mission statements. I don't want to create other, I don't want to create more committees.
Let me make a, another suggestion, that we, within the next two weeks, have a workshop with those from the fishing community who would like to discuss this.
Yes, I mean, this is...
And look at what, what the mission might be, how it would...
Well, the mission would be to correct course for the working waterfront. We're making decisions. I've lived in this town all my life, for 42 years. None of the selectmen, none of the board of the town has ever reached out and asked me as an individual commercial fisherman all my life, or my father before me, who has lived in this town his 64 years, or my grandfather, up until he was in his 70s. Not once. And again, it's, it's not that I disregard anybody's efforts, but we have people running the show that have, are very disconnected for what is going to be pro for the working waterfront. I mean, Kevin even said in his family heritage, I mean, he is one in his family that stepped away from fisheries. It's not that he ain't knowledgeable in a lot of things, but to be up to date with, especially with the climate and the opportunities that are happening right now with wind industry and everything else, there is a severe disconnect. I mean, we talk about climate change initiatives. Well, the problem is, is we got to look at how we collect the data. I mean, the data is not in an historical timeline fashion either. I mean, just look at what NOAA's done as well. I mean, during COVID, we did no research at all, but yet we're making assumptions based on assumption modeling. Well, the problem is, it's not what the working waterfront is seeing. I mean, even in the last committee meeting, or workshop, we just agreed to move, well, the committee agreed to move ahead with an open-ended statement. I mean, we don't even know the exact cost. We are literally guessing. But the problem is, when we're guessing, we're guessing with taxpayers' money. And that's something, I mean, where's the due diligence? I mean, I don't know about you, but if I misappropriate $80,000, my boss comes to see me, I should probably expect to be fired. So where's the due diligence? That's what we're asking. And now applying a working fisheries knowledge, you know, especially when it comes to the waterfront stuff, you know, the working waterfront wants to help. And like I said, again, this would be a good first step in that process to mending that wound. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else?
Here's another hand raised.
This is Gary Vincent again. I didn't realize that there was an exchange of ideas in the public comment. Could someone direct me to who I should be contacting, reference to questions I raised?
Gary, I received a number of emails from you. My intention is to respond to you, not tonight, but to do so in the coming week.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's just very frustrating when you receive no comment or no response from HCBC. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Here's another hand raised.
This is Gary Vincent again. I didn't realize that there was an exchange of ideas in the public comment. Could someone direct me to who I should be contacting, reference to questions I raised?
Gary, I've received a number of emails from you. My intention is to respond to you, not tonight, but to do so in the coming week.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's just very frustrating when you receive no comment or no response from HCBC. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any hands, Peter?
Nope, you're good.
All right. Select boards announcements.
I'm good.
I have one. I missed the storm, but, actually, I didn't really miss it, I just wasn't there. But I heard from the fire chiefs and everybody else in town, what a great job CMP did for the town of Harpswell, considering what they had to deal with, and, yeah, like, thank God, probably the last house in town that got turned on, apparently. Anyway, that's it.
Great.
Anything, Jane?
No, I have nothing.
We're good here, Kevin.
David, Jane, anything?
We're good.
No.
We're good here.
Hello?
Good.
Yep, little disconnect. Town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I did want to acknowledge that the Biden administration has declared that the storm events in January here, from the 9th through the 13th, will, will be eligible for both public, you know, infrastructure reimbursement costs. And there's also been a declaration that individuals, including Small, the Small Business Association and some of the services that it can offer to businesses, it's going to open up these kinds of resources to help people in Harpswell. So with regard to individual claims, people submitted some information to the state at the time of the disaster or shortly thereafter. So FEMA has that information, and they'll be contacting people. But in addition, we've been asked to let people know that they're actually going door to door in Harpswell. So they're knocking on doors, they're telling you the kinds of services that they offer, they are helping you submit a claim, or, you know, ask the questions you have, they're identified with badges, with clothing that, you know, says FEMA on it. So we just want to make sure people know that that's going on out there. In addition, we are working with FEMA to establish a local disaster recovery center where people can actually go, talk to FEMA, submit their claims information. One of the locations we're looking at is the old Oars Island Schoolhouse. Another area that they're looking at is the possibility of the former West Harpswell School, Harpswell Coastal Academy. So there's been no final decision on where that location might be. In addition, they've checked out our parking lot here at the Harpswell Town Office, and they may be interested in putting up a mobile unit here. So I think you're going to see a lot of federal resources in Harpswell, and I'm pleased to say that Brian Beard, who's with the Small Business Administration, has come to the meeting tonight to talk about the kinds of programs that might be available. And in particular, I would ask Brian if he could address how the working waterfront could benefit from some of the programs that are going to be available to people in Harpswell who experienced loss. Thank you.
All right. Can send the judge out?
Oh, oh, Brian is here. Excuse me, Brian Beard is here with the Small Business Administration.
Okay, yeah, hello, everyone. Welcome. As Christie said, my name is Brian Beard. I'm a public affairs specialist for the Small Business Administration, Disaster Assistance, and we work alongside FEMA whenever there is a presidential disaster declaration, such as what just occurred on Thursday in relation to the storms, the back-to-back storms that you had in January. So as she mentioned, from anybody that had damage from January 9th to 13th, may be eligible for assistance. FEMA will come in and make sure the home is safe and secure to live in. So if you had enough damage to your home that it's not safe to live in, then you definitely want to register with FEMA. They might be able to provide rental assistance and, you know, the basics to make the home livable again. And we offer, the SBA Disaster Assistance offers low-interest, long-term loans to cover any damage that's not covered by insurance, or FEMA, or another source. So these loans, even though our name says business in it, we, these loans are available to homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes, and nonprofit organizations. And so if you live in any of the eight coastal counties, including Cumberland, New York, Saginaw, all the way up, you can, you know, get a loan to cover physical damage, and also businesses can get a loan to cover economic injury. So if a small business or a private nonprofit had a drop in sales income as an indirect result of the storms, you could get a working capital loan to cover your monthly expenses until you're back up to speed again. There's no cost to apply for the loans, and no interest or payments for the first year, so the first payment's not due until one year after dispersment, and no interest charged for that first year. So if you pay off the loan in less than a year, there's no interest to the loan at all. Even if somebody's already used a credit card or a bank loan to pay for damages to their home or business, you can still apply for an SBA loan, replace that more expensive debt with a lower interest debt from, from an SBA loan. So after the first year with no interest or payments, the interest rate for most homeowners is 2.688% with a 30-year term. So that would be, with a $24,000 loan, that would be only about $70, a little over $70 a month for a payment. So it's very reasonable. And for most businesses, it's as low as 4% interest rate, and for nonprofits, it's 3.25%. And again, that's up to a 30-year term. Somebody with very deep pockets that could fund their own recovery might get a large, a higher interest rate with a seven-year term, but the vast majority of people will get that lower, you know, 2.688 or 4% for businesses. And if somebody's not sure if they're going to need a loan, or if they're still waiting on their insurance settlement, you could go ahead and apply. We're not going to cover the damage, it is covered by insurance, but you could go ahead and apply and even get your first installment, and then once the money comes from the insurance, that could pay off the loan. And if you are offered a loan, you have two months to decide whether you want to take it or not. It's easy to decline that loan offer at no cost to you. So we encourage people to apply now and decide later if they're still not sure whether they'll need it or not. If you have a high insurance deductible, the loan could be used, the loan could be used for covering that insurance deductible. Also, in addition to the loan to cover whatever's not covered by insurance, you can add 20% of the total estimated damage to your home or business onto that loan amount to use for mitigation to prevent future damage. A stronger roof, putting in a sump pump, or changing the landscaping or retaining wall to prevent floodwater from coming into your home, or elevating your electrical panel on your utilities, your furnace several feet off the ground, so that it's not as likely to get flooded the next time. For loans up to $25,000, there's no collateral or closing costs, so somebody could get a $25,000 loan and not have to worry about putting a lien on your home or, or business. And based on the amount of estimated damage and your ability to repay, homeowners can get up to $500,000 to, to repair their home. Homeowners and renters can get up to $100,000 for personal property damage, the contents of the home. And businesses can get up to a total of $2 million for a combination of physical damage mitigation to prevent future damage, or economic injury, if somebody had a drop in sales. So for homeowners and renters, it's important to register first with FEMA to see if you can get grant assistance from FEMA. But if somebody does register with FEMA as a homeowner or renter, they may get a letter referring them to the SBA for a loan to cover personal property damage, because FEMA tries to prioritize those that need the help the most. So if somebody registered with FEMA and gets that letter referring them to the SBA, it's important to follow through and apply for that loan, even if you don't want a loan, because if the loan application that's no cost gets denied, you may be referred back to FEMA for additional assistance for your personal property damage. So it's important to follow through on that, you know, because it's no cost to apply, and you can easily decline a loan offer if you do get one, at no cost to you. There are several steps in the application process, so you do need to follow up and make sure. If you haven't heard anything from FEMA or SBA after two or three weeks, you want to follow up, call the 800 number or visit a disaster recovery center. Christie was saying they're looking into opening a possible disaster recovery center here. The DRCs, the disaster recovery centers have both FEMA and SBA people. We're also looking into opening a business recovery center for SBA only, thinking about possibly in Yarmouth or, you know, somewhere in that area that's not too far away from here. We're still looking at, at the possible options for that. But the business recovery centers, they focus on businesses, but even homeowners and renters can go there as well. Now, as far as for the fishing industry, if you, your boat and your dock are, you know, they're privately owned, and they're part of your commercial fishing business, that is business equipment. And so the business loans do cover not only real estate, but equipment and inventory. So if you lost inventory and equipment during the storms, you could apply for a business loan and possibly get a loan for 4% interest rate for up to 30-year term to cover that damage. If you live on an island and your only means to get to your home is through your boat and your dock, then that is home access, and somebody should register with FEMA. And anything not covered by FEMA may be covered by an SBA loan for access, but if you can get to your home using a vehicle, you know, a car, then that boat and dock is considered, you know, not essential need to get to your home, so it would not be covered. So for individual, you know, homeowners, if it's your only access to get to your home, it may be covered, but if it's, you can drive to your home in a car, then it's considered a quote-unquote luxury good, and so that would not be, not be covered. But for business owners that, you know, do fishing, or crabbing, lobstering, et cetera, that boat and, and dock are part of your business equipment, so that could be, could be eligible. It's a case-by-case basis, but we encourage everyone to apply at no cost, come into the center, and talk to one of our loan specialists about what is needed to apply and, and, you know, learn about the process. And like I said, it's free to apply. If you get a loan offer, you have two months to decide whether you want it or not. So you can go to lending.sba.gov to start the process online, or you can call our customer service center at 800-659-2955, or email disastercustomerservice@sba.gov, and I'll be providing all this information to Christie, and she can put it on the town. service center at 800-659-2955, or email disastercustomer service at sba.gov, and I'll be providing all this information to Christie, and she can put it on the town website and Facebook page, et cetera. But the easiest way is to visit a recovery center in person. We've just opened one down in York County in Wells at the Fire Department, and we've also opened a business recovery center down in York County also, in the town of York. And there's also one up in Ellsworth in Hancock County, but we will be opening, you know, in Cumberland County soon for that business recovery center. And you know more than I do about the potential disaster recovery center nearby, so. But in addition to, you know, what I mentioned about the boats, boat docks, if you have, you know, the SBA home disaster loans, the ones that are the 2.688% interest rate for most people, are for your primary residence where you live at least half the year. But if you have a rental property, a second property that you rent out and earn rental income on a home and pay taxes on that rental income just like a business, then that's considered a business, and you could get a business loan as low as 4% interest to cover damage not covered by insurance to that rental property. So that's another option, even though the basic home loans are only for the primary residence. And I don't know if it's as applicable here. In Oxford County, from the December storms, there were a lot of people that had their driveways, private roads washed out. So if you have a private driveway or road that leads to your primary residence where you live at least half the year, and an emergency vehicle can no longer access your home because of the washout, you could, you should register with FEMA. You can get some assistance, a limited amount of assistance, and what's not covered by them or insurance, you know, could be covered by an SBA loan with a long term and a relatively low payment. So those are some of the types of things that we can cover. Does anybody have any questions?
The deadline, what is the deadline that people have to apply by?
Okay, yeah, it's May 20th for the physical damage to your home, business, or your personal property. It's a May 20th deadline. Those economic injury loans, if a business had a drop in sales, because we often don't know how long a business will be affected or when that effect will start, there's a nine-month window, so it's not till December 23rd for the deadline for the economic injury loans. But for the physical damage, it's May 20th.
Is this for your primary residence?
Yes, for damage, the home loans are for your primary residence where you live at least half of the year. If you have a secondary home that is rented and you earn rental income and pay taxes on that rental income just like a business, you could get a business loan to cover damage to that secondary home. Okay, thank you very much.
Consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes, the appointment of officials, and the authorization of the warrants, including the latecomer of $141.93.
Second.
All in favor? We've got a warp application here. Agnes Torchio and Lauren Brogan, warp application, 16 Blueberry Way, map 58, lot 54. Norman going to speak to this?
Good evening. As he said, this is a small dock off of Bluebird Lane, which is just behind Dingle Island, 16-foot by 6-foot dock with a floating ramp. It's up in the head of what is colloquially known as the Gunk Hole. It will be a tidal dock, so we've built just enough, designed just enough structure to allow them to transit down over the shore to their float without causing an erosion issue.
Yep. Fine, I'm okay.
Jane, you say you're good?
Yes, I'm good.
Yes, I'm good.
All right, in that case, I have no problems with it. I move to approve the application as the harbor master indicates there's no hazard navigation and no injury rights of others in relation to fishing, bowing, or navigating. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, Norman.
Thank you.
All right, Marine Batteries, Shellfish Committee, recommendation for actauchum moratorium and derelict boat in Macro Cove. Where do you want to start?
I would invite the chair of the committee to present the recommendation to the board. Thank you.
Good evening.
David is here.
Yep, David Wilson, evening. You guys have all received a copy of our recommendation, correct?
Yes.
As it stands right now, I request an educational workshop with the board and whatever committees here in town that would like to take part before we move forward with this recommendation.
Same thing, David.
Yep.
Do we want to try to set something up right now while we're here? How soon would you like that?
Soon as possible, whenever it's convenient for.
Okay. Would you like in person?
In person?
I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's going to have to be after April 8th, I can tell you that.
What about me?
How much time do you think, like an hour or?
At least an hour, maybe two, I'm not sure. You know, it depends on what party show up.
So if the next board meeting is April 11th, we could do a workshop before that meeting. I think you were saying, should we start at four?
Yeah.
You think you might need up to an hour and a half or so?
Yes.
Okay. So.
David, who do you have in mind? You know, for stakeholders, you know, I think the Maine Fish Association, maybe Maine Agriculture Association?
Yeah, yeah. Protect Maine's Heritage, you know, I'd like to see them attend and any, any interested party. I mean, this would be a public workshop, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, yep. Yep, yeah, I just, you know, to educate the public and administration, you know, exactly what we're asking for.
Sounds good to me.
That's good.
So you said the 8th?
Of the 11th.
The 11th.
I'll send you an email.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, your time.
Thank you.
Spaulder?
Yes.
Yes.
Which issue are we addressing?
The next one is the derelict boat in Macro Cove, and then the letter of intent.
All right, so good evening, Paul Plummer, Town's Harbor Master. Before you again, for another derelict, abandoned vessel, this time in Macro Cove. This has been in the cove for a while. It's on an illegal mooring. Initially, I was working with the individual who had it out there. He was working to get it legal, and then he sold it. Now, the individual that he sold it to is incarcerated. He's been incarcerated for well over 30 days. The individual is well-known to the sheriff's office, and there's just a lot of issues surrounding this boat, and I think you can see by the pictures, it's probably just a matter of time before it sinks. The fisherman who initially sold it to this gentleman, he is still being very generous and going out there and pumping it out because, because he doesn't want to see it go down. But at any point, he could just give that up, and if it just keeps taking more water on, it's going to sink and it's mooring. So I did send an initial letter to this individual. I sent it to HUEAV where his last known address was, and I also sent a copy to the Cumberland County Jail, so we can only assume that he received it. But now, I do not hear back from you, passing to the board, issue your notice of abandonment, and we'll do the same thing. We'll send a letter to HUEAV and the Cumberland County Jail.
I move that we declare it abandoned.
Second. Did you hear us, Kevin?
Here a motion by David.
David moved, and I second that we declare it abandoned.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
So, part two to that, Mr. Chairman, I just think it's important that we can deem as a town vessels abandoned, but this is becoming an increasing problem, as we know. As of right now, I don't even think we have the funding. We depleted our marine hazard fund. So this is some food for thought that we don't want to see another vessel go down, but we're going to need to find funding somehow to get rid of these problem vessels. Bring it to shore from there. It's not in good shape, so I don't think you're going to get much for it if he were to officially turn it over.
Number three?
Yep.
Yep.
Financial report.
We have the letter.
Letter of intent. I don't know what's going on with.
We don't want you to do that.
So I apologize, we did get the information to you guys about the letter of intent, but the actual packet you should have now, this is through the Maine Coastal Program. We'd like to, and this is a recommendation from the Waterfront Committee through staff, to put engineering costs to look at Potts Point as a whole, not necessarily just the town dock, not necessarily just the boat launch, but get some engineering to see what we can do to possibly bring back something down there for commercial and recreational use. As everyone knows, the town dock was destroyed by the January 10th and 13th storms, so this would be the first step to figuring out what, what could go there in the long run. And again, it's not committing to one, one structure or another. The request is for $35,000, speaking with Mary Ann Nafe from the Climate Resiliency Committee, Sustainability Committee. We do know the town does have some funding, so we did note in the program that if that was attractive to the Maine Coastal Program, that we have some funding that we could contribute, that maybe, maybe be willing to grant that, grant that fund. So we're kind of just waiting to see if, if you guys approve this tonight, there would be a part two. We, we'd hope to be invited back to submit a full application, and that's where the details and the nitty-gritty would really be worked out.
I move we approve the submission of the letter of intent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, now that we've audited the report, the 2023 financial.
Just by way of introduction, I'd like to introduce Sam and Ron Smith from RHR, Smith &amp; Company, the town's auditors. They're here. Our financial statements are posted on our website, available for public viewing, and any questions can be answered, but Sam and Ron are here to speak about their audit and their findings. Welcome.
Folks, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes.
Can you see my screen?
Yes. Yes. Can't read it.
Principal Murray, Charles Smith &amp; Company, I got Sam Morgan off with me, and he was looking into having me for Harpswell's audit, just to tell you a little bit about us.
Do you have the book, Jim? Do you have this?
I left it at home. It's okay, not a problem.
We hired 31 people to accommodate our growth last year alone.
I feel every bit of it. And to sit here and have a presentation for Harpswell is great because you guys do a good job delivering the information to us so that we can have an audit, because I can tell you, it doesn't roll all the way that time, you guys. So, so I, my hat's off to Terry, you know, and, and her, her ability and her diligence in providing us information timely, you know, and readily, so that we can sit here and turn your audit around within 90 days at the end of your fiscal year. So just to hit the highlights, you know, your town got the highest opinion of ours, it's an unmodified opinion as of December 31st, 2023. If we had any problems, if we had any issues, if we had any disagreements with management, we'd have to note them in our audit opinion. We had none. So again, you guys got our highest opinion. And to really kind of, you know, talk about, you know, where you were and start the conversation, I'm on your balance sheet, you know, for the town, and everybody can see I'm going to, where I'm going to put my cursor here, I'm in the general fund column, very first column on the left, and simply said, the town had $7.5 million of assets, everything you owned, against liabilities and obligations of about a million, leaving you guys with equity or fund balance carryover to the tune of about $6.5 million, you all, you know, as of December 31st, okay? The big number here is the unassigned fund balance of about $4.3 million. That's representative of about 90 days of your operating budget. We like to see in the municipal world, you know, 30, the lowest form, which is about 8%, 60 at 16, 24% at 90 days of your operating budget, sitting in a little assigned reserve, and you guys have that 90, that 90 days. And I think that that is, that's good news, for sure, you know, and puts you certainly within your fund balanceee that you, policy that you have and adopted for the town of Harpswell. You know, you certainly have landed, you know, consistently landed there every year. So, you know, so again, hats off. You can see this other $2.2 million. We have a bunch of various special revenue reserves and capital projects reserves in addition to our unassigned fund balance of $4.3 million, all earmarked for, you know, for future projects at the, at the town of Harpswell. And, you know, kind of simply said, you know, taking your unassigned fund balance, taking the money that you have sitting in your reserve, I'd give your town, you know, somewhere between an A and an A minus, you know, for, for a financial grade as, as you, you know, as you compare yourself, which I don't like to do, but just knowing Harpswell the way that I do, and knowing your, you know, your financial portfolio, the services that you provide, you know, et cetera, I would put that grade, you know, probably at a strong A, A minus in the worst case scenario, but a strong X, so. American Rescue Plan, another conversation piece on here, is we've got some other pockets of money, you know, set aside, $121,000, you know, in various road projects. And then, and again, the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act, the second phase of the COVID relief funds. You guys got about $262,000 sitting in those ARPA funds, and just to put you on, put you on alert, is by December 31st, 2024, those funds have to be spent or obligated to get them out. The good news is, is that behind it, once the ARPA funds start being spent and obligated and drying up, is our state's got $2.5 billion when Congress passed the America, Build Back America package back in, you know, late fall of 2021, and the president signed it into law last year. You know, the state, our state was the recipient of $2.5 billion that we're actually starting to see some of that money come down through, you know, into the, into the local sector, and it's for infrastructure, roads, bridges, you know, things like that, you know, and, you know, and that, that is a big need, broadband, you know, certainly, you know, a category out there that's heavily discussed out there. So, so we're starting to see that. I think once the ARPA money dries up here later on this fall, you know, the details of these, you know, that we're starting to see some of the details here through the bond bank, through the water, the clean water funds, you know, that water, wastewater, you know, and clean water funds, you know, that the bond bank's distributing right now. You know, we're starting to see that money being released, starting to see USDA, EPA, you know, getting involved in, you know, some of this infrastructure money as well. But I think the heavy money, over the next three years, you know, you'll start hearing the details and start seeing the details more significantly, I would say, probably sometime after July 1st, August, and September. But that's good news. Found money, we'll never see it again. The last time we saw. The last time we saw it was in 2008, you know, with the ERA funds, the American Recovery Funds, you know, and clearly, you know, that, you know, that pales in comparison to the stimulus money of COVID relief funds that Congress has obligated down to various levels of our community and to govern. So. Any questions on that page right there, you all?
No.
I'm going to skip a page and go down to, well, I'll start here. I'm going to go down to the budget here. But the town took in about $17.9 million in its general fund, spent about $17.2 before its transfers out to various funds, projects, and reserve. So overall, the town added to its fund balance about $575,000, you know, but, you know, but that's there's timing differences between the, you know, adding and the releasing of this money of your capital reserve projects that go on, you know, because I believe you had over $2.1, $2.2 million for various projects that I'll show you here in a second. Then we are going to get into the budget to actual pay. So you can kind of see where the town left. There's the big one right there, $2.1, little almost $2.5 million that carried forward, you know, with from one year to the next into this next fiscal year that we're in right now. You know, three months into that fiscal year, we've got $2 million, about $2.5 million of various projects. I'll show you the detail of that in a second. You know, but largely, you know, the increase in fund balance was largely in spot to the town, you know, receiving revenues in estimate, and greater than estimate, what it expected to come through the door, excise tax being, I think, the biggest one of that. And then we had some unspent appropriations that, you know, some carried forward, some latched to get re-appropriated for this next year fiscal year 2020. And here's a breakdown of all those special revenue and dedicated funds that you have right here. Your special purpose funds, you know, the capital reserve funds clearly being the biggest with the town facilities, recycling, you know, and Mitchell Field, I mean, there's almost $1.3, $1.4 million, you know, set aside for those three various areas. And then emergency communication equipment. There's your $2 million set aside for various capital project fundings, you know, that roll forward, you know, to be spent the next fiscal year, which is the one you're in right now. So in that, just to show you where the math comes, there's the $2.2 million of all the reserve funds that carries forward to that statement there that I was just talking about. Money that is set aside in addition to that carryover balance of 90 days, you've got $2.2 million, you know, set aside for various projects. Typical in the municipal world, typical, you know, vehicle, you know, that government uses, you know, to stabilize not only its budget, but other earmarks and other certain aspects of service that aren't covered by general government. It's good for some. And that's why I think your financial condition is more of a stronger A because of that money you've taken the time to diligently put there. That's about the big highlights of this thing financially, you all. I'd like to make it more exciting, but I can't, you know, so. But that's about the big excitement there, and I, you know, and I think that the overall message that I send is is that this audit, you know, typically is one that's delivered timely and accurate to us so that we can turn this around timely and accurate to you and have a presentation like this within 30 days and, you know, 90 days of your end. You know, and hats off to Terry, hats off to Christie, you know, hats off to your staff for allowing us and giving us the ability to do that.
Hats off with you.
With you.
Getting all these numbers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ron and Sam. Appreciated this year's audit as every year, and Sam was kind of in there at the last minute, feet to the fire there, and did a good job. So thank you both.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
And I just want to say, Ron, I'm so glad that you called out Terry because she turns this information around so quickly. We have a March town meeting. We like to get this information out to the public in our town report that we mail to all our residents. And the month of January is a really wild and crazy one here. So she works especially hard to get that information to you folks so we can have auditive information to our town meeting voters. And she does a great job.
Hats off to you all to be able to be transparent and certainly, and provide your constituents with this information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to ask? Think we're good? Terry, any follow-up questions? Just let me know.
Well, be safe. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let him. Bye, Sam. All right. Lease rates with Pammy's Ice Cream Parlor.
I don't think it was anything you've said or anything like that.
Pam Douglas here, owner of Pammy's Ice Cream Parlor. So do you want you to go first or me to go first?
I could go first initially. This is before the board tonight because we discussed the lease rates. There's a five-year agreement between the town of Harpswell and Pammy's Ice Cream. We're going into our third year
I can't believe it.
in this agreement. I can't believe it either. So it starts in April, right, and it ends in March. Is that right?
October.
Yeah. So that's the cycle that we're on with this particular agreement and contract. We did go up quite a bit from year one to year two. And so I think this year, we were thinking about how much we had gone up and the fact that we had required the tenant now to do the mowing at the site. And so we're thinking that a cost of living increase could be applied to this lease agreement for the coming year, and that would hopefully satisfy both parties. I think that's a pretty minimal increase. And I think Pam has a lot to offer the community beyond just the business, and I think she's going to talk a little bit more about that tonight. But there are so many benefits that are really immeasurable that she provides to the community.
Thank you. Well, I do appreciate the increase being low this year. All of us in Harpswell everywhere suffered last year with our businesses, with all the rain. There was 27 days in June with rain, and people are not going to eat ice cream outside of the rain. Dolphin Marina, the decks were closed. There wasn't the boat traffic, so we all suffered. And the electric bill basically tripled last year. We, you know, we pay to have, we have, we bring our water in, and it's expensive. We bring in five truckloads a week, and we're paying for the trash up at the dump. So I do appreciate that it didn't go because last year was a it was a trying year for everybody with all the taxes and minimum wage going up, et cetera. And I think everybody, we all are on the same page with that. So I do appreciate it. So moving forward, I don't know if you all know, but I've been working with the Santa Fund for a couple of years now, and there's a lot of people suffering in our town. And I've seen it just face to face on a weekly basis. I'm very happy to, it makes me feel good that I can help out. In the wintertime, when I'm not open, is when I have more time to spend. So I've been trying to come here and get food for a lot of people that do not want to come here, people that can't drive. And I take care of Alzheimer's patients, and it gives them something to do and feel good about themselves as well. So anyway, I've been working with the Santa Fund, and when we ask for all the donations, it's usually December. This is when everybody's pockets are, it's hard. December's hard. They've got to provide for their own families and asking for toys for all the kids. So we came up with an idea. All of Evan, Mark, and Linda have joined the committee, Mary Coombs, myself. But we've come up with an idea to have Christmas in July, and they would like to have it at the ice cream shop. And I told them that I have insurance. They're willing to put pay insurance out of the Santa Fund. It's basically going to be, we'd like to find a Santa Claus to wear shorts and sandals. We're going to have a pink tree decorated with lights. It has to be pink. We're going to do, and we're just going to be accepting the toy donations like they always do, but instead of December, have it in July. And this is when all the tourists are here. And last year, I had a little box at my window. It just said Santa Fund donation. It was a little tiny box, and I raised quite a lot of money with that. The tourists were so generous, people that had never been here. We had a $5,000 donation. We had a $1,000 donation. These are people that have, they're not from here. It was the first time being here. And so we just feel this is when we could really, it would help, and it's not just Christmas anymore. This is year round. We're helping people that are, families that are, both parties are working. They can't make it. So they're buying groceries that we all know, $100 a bag, basically. So we just thought that this would be a great idea. It's not going to be anything loud that's going to disrupt the neighborhood. We planned it 12 to 4. I gave Christie some of the little flyers that we had made up. It's going to be raffles. We're going to ask businesses to donate and do raffle tickets. It's going to be a kid day, basically, but I think, we think it's going to be a big thing. So I'm asking permission on July 6th if we could do this at the ice cream shop. And it's to benefit the town.
You don't have to go any further. I shall move.
Thank you. Okay. And then there's another request.
Hold on. We got to prove that one.
Okay.
I second the motion. Moved and seconded, Kevin.
Aye.
Moved and seconded.
I don't, sorry.
Okay.
You got it, Pammy.
Thank you. The other request, we have ordered some little lobster boats that say Harpswell Santa Fund, and we've ordered 400 of them, and we've told a lot of people already, and they already want them. But I wanted to ask permission if I could just have a little bucket at my window and sell these little boats. They're going to be $20. And all that money is going into the Santa Fund, and we're going to sell those that day that we have the little Christmas in July.
We approve that as well.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Kevin.
All in favor?
Can you reject the increase?
Yes.
Get into that.
Okay, then I have one more, another request. So the day of the boat races, that's a big thing here in Harpswell, we all know. All of the money that is brought in for the sweatshirts, t-shirts, hats, all of it, all goes to the Santa Fund. That's helping our whole community. So whatever they don't sell, I'm just asking permission when the boat races are over, if they can bring the leftover sweatshirts to me, and I just sell them while I'm there. They go very quickly.
You got it. I move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, gosh. I have another request. Last year, David came down to the ice cream shop to look at the trees, and he went and bought some stakes to make sure that there's no parking going near the roots. Well, we had Tim Vale come down, and he looked at all the trees, and everything was fine, but there is one tree as you're turning into Mitchell Field on the road. It's down by the bench. The tree is dead, and he said it's very dangerous, like a child, a person, a car, it could be anybody going by, but there's a limb. And I was requesting if maybe you would be willing to have that tree cut down.
Was Tim not still our, our, he's retired?
He still provides advice and consultation to the town of Harpswell. Now, he might not actually take it down.
He provided a chainsaw.
He, I think he would look at the tree and tell us if it needed to come down, if it was a hazard.
And he basically said it was last year. And I, it's like I got busy and never.
He might be willing to take it down. I can, you know.
Well, okay, Christie's going to find out.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I don't want anyone to get hurt. And this last storm, when I went down the other day, I could see that another huge branch has come off, and I've moved a couple of them off, and it's ready to split, so.
I do remember there was a tree at Mackrel Cove with the swing.
Yes.
And every year, Tim would go and trim it, trim it. We were worried about limbs coming off, but I think it finally met its demise. So I don't know if he'll want to trim it and try to save it a little bit longer. I don't know, but we'll consult with him.
And it's basically, it's not one of them that's out in the middle. It's just on the side driving in, but just safety.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, I think that's it.
Boy, are you sure?
I think, and I just want to thank you all because I love being there, and I, oh, can't wait to open, and there is one more thing.
Well, then.
All right. I usually open May, and I would like to know if I could have permission to open a few days early on the 26th due to my delivery trucks. It's when they deliver my dentists, my ice cream, and I just wondered if I could open just a few days early.
Yep, I shall move.
Just forgiveness later.
Okay.
We'll say yes. Thank you. Consensus on that.
Yeah, sometimes it's better to just do it and then ask for forgiveness, yeah.
And now we go to the money.
Yeah, so I move that we sign the lease agreement for the next year with an increase of 3.2%.
Second.
I agree.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Are you sure you're done now?
One more thing?
She does. You have to.
Yes.
Proposal for townwide revaluations.
Yes, so I have invited Debbie Turner tonight to address the board. Debbie and I have been working on putting together an RFP, a Request for Proposal, for revaluation for the town of Harpswell. The voters have given us the funding, so we can now put this project out to bid. I do want to apologize to Chairman Johnson and actually to the full board. We got some changes, suggestions from the attorney yesterday, and somehow I just didn't get it out to the board until later today, and I'm sorry you don't have it in front of you, Chairman Johnson. But we're going to go through those changes. I would say that the only substantive areas, and we're going to always rely on our attorney for changes in these areas, independent contractor status, surety bond, indemnification and insurance, liquidated damages and penalties. Those sections have been reworded. I don't think we need to go through them because I think you would agree that we want to go with the advice of the attorney in those areas. And then I think Debbie's just going to run down through some of the other changes that are really just kind of cleaning it up and clarifying.
What is this? On page two, third paragraph, add customary to services on page one.
It was added a word, I think.
On page two? It says page one.
Well, this is page two.
I know, but.
The start at the top. How about we do that?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it should be page two.
It should be page two.
It should be page two.
Page two over on that side of the note.
Thank you. I know. That's why I was confused. All right. Thank you. All right. So let's start at the top.
It was rapid typing. Do you want to just start from the top of that list?
Sure.
And I think it's really just that first page, and then you can go over the schedules that we added in the back when we filled in that information.
All right.
Thank you.
So Debbie Turner, Sessors Agent, and we basically put this RFP together, and we sent it to the attorney's office, and they made some slight changes. And it's like, example, the word company, they want to change it to the word contractor. And they want to change selectmen to be select board.
Sure.
They want to add the word customary to this on page two, the third paragraph.
Oh, customary.
Customary, yeah. On page three, the first bulletin of scope of work, we're going to strike out transferring within the town between April 1st, 2024, and April 1st, 2026. It was repeated further down. It was repeated further down the page, so.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't need that twice. On page 4, we're gonna add to the comments, date is to expire to be in August of 2026.
Expected.
Expected, sorry, expected.
Commitment date.
Okay.
On page 5, rewording submitted revaluation schedule, see details below.
Oh, yep, okay.
Kevin, you're gonna, yeah, we're gonna need to send Kevin a copy of this.
Again, I don't think we felt there was anything substantive.
Subjective, yeah.
Just cleanup issue?
Cleanup issues.
Yep.
Housekeeping.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Let's see, so page 7, there was some data collection and valuation to add. Number 6, the attorney wanted to add another line, was assist the town in the differences of valuation to proceed the selectmen and the county commissioners or state court.
The defense of evaluation.
Defense, yeah.
Also on page 7, under Public Relations, the town assessor's agent shall approve all public information released before release. The, the, the select board needs to.
The select board, yeah. Need to be on that too. Because it should be the select board.
She gives it to us.
No, I can't. You guys have to approve everything.
But that's just the public relations piece, right?
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
That's not the final.
But normally, I'm approving anything, I'm going through you guys first.
Right, yeah.
Bring it to us and then.
Yes, exactly. I'm just the middle person.
Yeah, but a very important middle person.
So in page 13, removing the second paragraph under availability of funds. On page.
Where are we?
Whoa, got it.
Availability of funds.
They said remove this.
Oh, okay.
Second paragraph.
Okay, yeah.
On page 14, under interviews, a short list of.
Firms.
Firms. Where did I see firms?
Firms.
Oh, it's a typo. I'm like, rims, a list of rims, yes. May be selected. Okay, firms. May be selected for interviews. Interviews, if any, are expected to be scheduled for May 13th through the 17th of 2024.
Okay.
Also on page 14, I believe this was an additional.
Well, it was just kinda rewording it.
Remove, uh, rewording the evaluation and selecting to propose, to, proposal shall be evaluated by the committees consisting of at least two town employees and a select board member.
Right, this says members.
Members, yeah. So get rid of the S.
Select board member.
Okay. And formed by the town administrator to review proposals and to rank the proposals according to the following criteria listed in descending order of importance.
Okay. Organization qualifications for all, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And.
And then that committee makes a recommendation to the full board.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think those were all the changes wording.
And basically, we didn't fill in the scheduling of the selectmen awarding the proposals. We really didn't know what dates we're gonna be using. So on your form, you had no dates, really. You probably only had, the RFP was gonna be posted and advertised. I had Thursday of today's date. We're actually gonna put Friday with tomorrow's date.
Yeah.
Deadlines for questioning will be April 18th, 2024. Town responses will be April 25th. Post, proposal due to the town will be May 1st. Opening of the proposals will also be Wednesday, May 1st. Evaluate proposals, May 6th through the 10th. Interviews, like we just, we indicated before, was May 13th through the 17th. Recommendations of select sections reviewed by the committee will be May 20th through the 24th. And the approvals, the Board of Selectment approval will be May 30th or June 6th. Oh, on the bid proposal document, under number 5, defense of value posted commitments to provide an hourly rate.
With a not to.
With not, okay.
Lump sum.
Lump sum. So basically, I'm recommending making the changes that the attorney has suggested for the RFP.
You okay with it, David?
Yeah, I so move.
Second.
Father favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We'll work on that tomorrow.
We'll work on that tomorrow and get it all up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Appreciate your staying. So DOT is going to do a project at the Cripstone Bridge. They have indicated, they were putting it out to bid. They thought they were looking at a project cost of around $600,000 or more. They wanted permission, pardon?
Thank you just.
Oh, sorry. And they wanted permission from the town to use any town roads with heavy equipment if necessary. They haven't identified that there are any town roads that they would use. This is kind of a standard procedure that they like to follow with all communities. So they asked us to put it on your agenda. And it's in front of you tonight to see if you would approve their request.
Yep.
Coming down 24 to the bridge and going home.
We don't really issue a permit, well.
I think you just wave.
And it's not a, and it's not a posted road. So yeah, we, we would waive that. Yeah, I move a waive, waive it.
Second.
Father favor?
Aye.
Aye. Planner for job description. Planner for job description.
So this is in front of you tonight because it was in the proposed 2024 budget to hire a full-time planner who would work here at the town office. We've had a contracted planner for a number of years now. It's been, you know, 20 to 24 hours a week. It just doesn't seem to be enough time for the needs of Harpswell. And so we have actually gone back to our archives and looked at an earlier job description that we had when we had a previous full-time planner. And we consulted with our current contract planner, reached out to MCAG. And so tonight, you have sort of this compilation of a job description for a full-time town planner for the town of Harpswell.
Could we just clone Mark? Wouldn't that work?
You know, Mark seriously wants to retire at some point, and we're gonna have to let him go.
If we could just clone him, though. If we could just have another Mark. Has he, has Mark been involved at all in helping to put this together?
Yeah, he's helped.
There's a couple of things. Under physical demands, I found this to be a little funny. It says he sometimes may require to walk and stand, reach with hands and arms, climb and balance, stoop, kneel, crouch, or crawl.
Okay. Can I tell you where that language came from?
Yes.
So at one point, we hired a consultant to look at all of our town employee job descriptions. And it was suggested that we should put things in our job descriptions when we expected people to possibly do these kinds of things.
You expect them to crawl?
Why that is there. I, you know, are you looking for something under the?
Under the desk.
Under the deck or something? I don't know.
Asking for a raise. The other thing is down in the paragraph below, the last bottom, it says, the employee maybe, I think there should be a space, may be.
Oh.
Not maybe, right? See what I'm saying?
Yeah. You know, I think this is a situation where we never know until we put this job description out, what the candidate pool is gonna look like. But there are other towns that are having a hard time finding professional planners. So, you know.
So good luck to us.
I think we're a really attractive community, though. We have a great place for people to work. Our staff loves working here. They'll have a nice office with a nice view.
Yes, a nice view down the bay, yeah.
And, and a great group of people to work with and a wonderful community to work for and in. So I think, I think that goes a long way.
Only question I have, there's nothing about the salary or the scale.
Well, we had done some preliminary calculations. I think when we post our advertisement, we're probably gonna use some language like the salary is commensurate.
With experience.
With experience. Or, you know, I don't know that we wanna put a number out there.
Right, no, I, I was just wondering how you plan to do, how you plan to do that.
I mean, I do think it's going to be a senior level of our staff. And we're gonna have to expect to pay what we pay some of our senior level people.
Yeah.
To attract someone, so.
I move that we approve this job description.
Second.
Father favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
She has approval to send it out next.
No, I'm gonna, we're gonna send it out. I mean, I'm assuming you're okay with that.
Yeah.
We plan to advertise now.
Right, well, I, I move that we send this out then. We look for applicants.
Carry forth.
I think I didn't include that in my motion, and we probably should.
I will second that addition, that we approve it and we approve sending it out. Thank you to the administrator.
Okay. Father favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a tiny little brief full contract.
So I think these come as no surprise to the select board. These are annual agreements that the town of Harpswell has had with Cumberland County for a number of years. We have agreements for both law enforcement and for Marine Patrol. You know, we've gone through the budget advisory process. We've gone to town meeting. The amounts of the contracts have been approved by, been approved in our budgets, which were put before the voters. So there's nothing really different in these contracts. They're gonna provide the same level of service. The last couple of years, we've asked the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department to do more, what are we calling them? The, the speed patrols. And, and they initially would try to hire people to come in for like a six-hour period to do a special speed patrol. But they're having trouble finding enough people to work. So now, they've incorporated these speed patrols into their regular patrol shifts and.
I was gonna ask that because under, under the patrol, under Article 2E, it says, when necessary, the sheriff shall additionally provide the town at no additional cost the following expertise and services, which is, and doesn't mention speed detail, but does it include speed detail?
Well, it does when they're part of the routine patrol. When we had these extra speed patrols, we paid extra money for those. But they told us that they could no longer guarantee having those. So it's part of a routine patrol.
And under the Marine Patrol, on page 2, down at the bottom, it says, he or she will also be available for general law enforcement duties when available.
That is true.
They will be available when they're available, by golly.
Well, so, I mean, I'm glad you raise it. The Marine Patrol wardens are deputized.
Right.
They can pull someone over for speeding. If they see any illegal activity, they can get involved. So we actually benefit from having them in the community. They have some priorities that relate to shellfish conservation projects, so.
I'm just saying it's a funny way to word that.
Funny way to word it.
When they're available, by golly, they'll be available.
But I, I think we do get this additional law enforcement protection from our Marine wardens, which has been a great benefit.
And so the sheriff will provide us with the Office General Orders, right? They, do they do that? Okay. I move that we approve both of these.
Second.
Father favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contract amendment with Blue Sky.
So this amendment relates to the tower at Mitchell Field. It was constructed by Blue Sky Tower. We put out a bid and we ended up going with that company. AT&amp;T is on that tower. We have heard that Verizon is supposed to get on that tower in 2024. They were supposed to get on in 2023, but that didn't happen. But anyway, as part of our agreement with Blue Sky, the town is able to put emergency communications equipment on that tower. So for the very first time, that tower is going to be part of our emergency communication system. We are putting in a brand-new, state-of-the-art, emergency communication system. It's going to have equipment at the Mitchell Field Tower, the brand-new tower at the Oars Island Fire Station, and the tower behind the transfer station. And that's going to happen in the next couple of months. We needed to amend our agreement with Blue Sky because we had to specifically show the equipment and the location of the equipment on the tower. And we're also going to have a concrete pad at the base where there will be a cabinet with some equipment in there. So again, we are really stepping up our game when it comes to emergency communications. It's long overdue. And this is one of the, the legs of the new communication system.
I can't remember. Are they doing it at no cost? I can't remember if they're.
There's no charge for us to put our.
Good, I thought that's what I remembered. Okay, I, I move that we approve this amendment.
Second.
Father favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Policy amendment to offer dependent life insurance at employees' costs.
So I had an inquiry from an employee. Excuse me. So I had an inquiry from a couple of employees about some spousal dependent, spousal and children-dependent life insurance. As this board knows, life insurance for our employees is part of their health insurance if they are enrolled in our health insurance. And if they're not enrolled in health insurance, they can take life insurance as a separate policy. And, and then a few years ago, the select board added supplemental life, which is at 100% the employees' cost. But it's a benefit through main municipal employees' health trust, often discounted more than the regular market. And this request has been to offer the dependent life insurance, which would cover a spouse. If the spouse died, then the employee would be paid. Or if a child passed, then the employee would be paid based at the rates. And again, this is proposed to be at 100% of the employees' cost if approved, this policy amendment this evening.
So all of the underlying things would be adding?
Correct.
I move we approve it.
Second.
Father favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, other business? Anybody else left? Any hands up?
Your letter regarding recycling.
Do you wanna talk about that?
Sure.
That was after other business. Oh, that is up. All right.
So.
A subject matter.
So, have you got a copy of that, Kevin?
Yes.
You do? So the Recycling Committee is interested to know what's happening on the national level with recycling. And recycling has kind of hit a, a wall, I guess, if you might say. And fewer things are being recycled than we think should be. And so out of frustration, they would like to send a letter to Pingery and King. I think, maybe just Pingery. I think that might be an effective start to ask where, who's doing what and how can we find out about it? And there's a copy of the letter here that Chuck has written. And so it'd be on Town Letterhead, and it would be addressed to. And so it'd be on town letterhead, and it would be addressed to Congresswoman Pingree.
And if I'm remembering correctly, that the issue is while we continue to collect the material to recycle, a lot of it doesn't get recycled. It gets put into landfills because we don't have the infrastructure.
Correct.
To handle it ourselves.
We used to send a lot of things to China, and they stopped taking it because it was so much garbage in it. India, I think, I think may still take some, but they're gonna.
But anyway, we don't have the, we don't have the infrastructure for handling recycling.
Right.
Which doesn't make any sense in 2024.
We're struggling here on the local level, and we could use some help, so. So I move that we send this, put this on town's letterhead and send it to Congresswoman Pingree.
Second.
Uh, favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the only other item that I would like to add under other business is, at your last meeting, the board approved me sending out the short, town short-term borrowing for tax anticipation note. As the public and the board recalls, you know, we don't start accepting taxes until September, and our funds run out, especially with our school payment in April. And so we take a short-term borrowing, a tax anticipation note, and I had recommended at that time up to 3.8 million dollars. I did reach out to the selectmen, select board members individually. After reevaluating in a couple of projects that are moving up a little quicker than my first analysis had shown, I'd like to increase that up to $4 million. And of course, I do it on an as-needed basis. Do not draw down the full amount. It's as needed, so if it's, the additional funding is not needed, I will not draw down. But the individual board members did agree, but I would like to bring it up at the public meeting and have that addressed by the board this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Uh, favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, there's one other thing that.
I had a couple things too.
Okay. The Energy and Technology Committee met the other night, and Mark was in on the meeting, and we got to talking about the town campus here, and how sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. That maybe we should put together a consortium of committees, like the Energy and Technology, Recycling, maybe Town Lands, the Emergency Services, so that we're all, we're all on the same page.
A super committee?
A super committee. Well, it'll be a consortium of members from these different committees. Just, you know, think about it. Maybe talk about it at our next meeting.
Just a thought that I've had, a thought that I've had about committees, maybe there's some other things as well that the goals and the mission statements and so on, seems to me that we've had a process where committees came together, talked about what they were doing year by year. So maybe, Christie, we could ask you to.
We haven't done that in a while, but that's another way to.
Right. We could ask you.
Talking to one another.
To sort of think about, how do we coordinate the committees without adding so many more meetings for people?
Right.
That they don't, so. And maybe include them in what they think needs to be coordinated.
So speaking of a committee, the task force has rescheduled. So we had an information session at Cundies Harbor recently, and the task force did a wonderful job educating the public about what was in the report, and some themes were kind of touched on that night. So we had the Cundies Harbor information session, but the one at Oars Island this past weekend on Saturday, and then the one that was going to be on Harpsol Neck at the Kellogg Church on Sunday, those were both canceled.
Postponed.
Or postponed, but the task force has come up with one meeting for next Thursday, April 4th, at the Kellogg Church at 4 o'clock. So a 4 to 6.
6 o'clock.
Sorry, 6 o'clock, sorry. Okay. So April 4th, 6 o'clock. So typically, when you might think of a selectmen's meeting on a Thursday night at 6, they're going to have the information session at the Kellogg Church.
Christie, just to add, I think you just said task force, but we want to make sure people know this is the comprehensive plan task force. So it's about the draft comp plan.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's all about the comp plan. And so we hope people will turn out. We will get our electronic sign going and maybe a sandwich board over at the church too, or whatever, but we'll, we'll try to get the word out, and I hope for a good turnout that night.
And on April 10th?
On April 4th, is that?
No, April 10th at the community school.
The public.
That is the public hearing.
That's the public hearing. So, so is there going to be another one for, we're going to have one at the, at the Oars Island School?
No.
Not going to do that anymore.
Well, that, at, oh, right, the Oars Island. I don't think there's time for them to have two sessions, so. I don't know if you want to add to it.
Timeline didn't work, so we just made one more.
Combined into one at 6 o'clock.
Better go to the Kellogg, okay.
But then, you're right, there is the public hearing, which is required. It's statutorily required that the task force, the comp plan task force, had to put out a draft plan, and people had to have it 30 days prior to the public hearing on April 10th. And these informational sessions are to try to get people up to speed because it is a lengthy document. We have loan copies out here to people. They're also at the local libraries in Harpsol and at the Curtis Library in Brunswick. It's online. We will print maps for people and sections for people, and we'll even print an entire report for someone if they would like us to. So we're available to do that upon request. And then the other thing I'd like to mention is, so tonight, the Small Business Association representative came to your meeting. In two weeks, FEMA is going to send one or two people here to do kind of an overview of all the services that they provide. They were going to try to make it tonight, but they weren't able to, so expect that in two weeks.
Good.
Thank you.
Sir, anything else?
No.
Nope.
I want to thank everybody for doing this while I'm on my little.
Hold on, hold on.
Can someone tell me how much it costs the town for Pammy's Ice Cream to have her stand down?
Down where it is.
What the rent is?
No, what it costs the town for her stand to be there.
Doesn't really cost us anything, I mean.
So why is there an increase in the lease yearly?
Well, it's just a minimum, just cost of living.
I understand it's minimum, but when you have a small business that provides so much to the community, big donations to the Santa Fund, I'm not asking you to undo what you did tonight, but maybe next year, I'd recommend that we overlook the increase. It's not costing the town anything. It's, the town is actually making money on the lease.
Well, the fact is, George, we're not charging the what it's worth as it is, so it's a pittance.
But it's making money. It's making the town money.
Oh, absolutely. We know that. We know that it's a great thing for the town. We know that. So this is why it's just a very minimal cost of living increase. But yeah, maybe next year. I don't know. We'll see.
I hear your suggestion.
Anything else?
No. Time is it?
Good.
All of that.
Just get, we're done then.